So for the work session this evening, we want to talk a little bit about budget finance and just because there have been a lot of changes at the legislative level and that are coming down to us and we're having to figure out how to maneuver through these new obstacles and this new world and Lindsay Simonato, she is from Baker Tilly and she will be here to kind of walk us through that. We've already sat down with her through Zoom or Teams, whatever we use there. And she's done over with Blake and I and Cindy already, but we definitely thought this was important that all of our board members need to at least be aware and make sure that you know, you're not blindsided by anything. So that's kind of what tonight's about. So Lindsay or Blake, who wants to start there? I don't care.
Yep. And so with all this stuff coming down, you know, obviously I was, I do not know everything about what's going on here. So Lindsay at Baker Tilly, they kind of study this stuff. They're the ones that kind of tell us what's coming down and they put it all together. So I thought, you know, her talking to us would be really good for you guys to hear the same thing. So that I made sure it was said correctly. So kind of the professional coming in really kind of talk about our, our school situation.
Just know that there's, there's a lot going on here and everyone's trying to wrap their arms around it and it's, it could be that there's some,
Thanks.
It's a lot of information that I'll throw at you and it just know that it might take a little bit of time to digest it. So always follow up with questions and everything as well, but. So.
I can push while you talk if you want. You just stay over there.
So first we'll just do a high level of some of the things that changed in this last legislative session. Dive into more the property tax piece of it because there were multiple things in there. And then also kind of what does that mean for Carroll schools and just some considerations as you plan? So this. This is at a high level, some different things that were included in Senate Enroll Act One. Assess values. There were a lot of changes here that are impacting net assessed values. So there's gross assessed value, which is essentially your market value of a property, which, which is before any deductions. The net assessed value is the gross assessed value minus the deductions gives you your net assessed value. And the net assessed value is ultimately the taxable value. And so the changes here are impacting more that net assessed value side. So increased deductions for homestead properties, those properties already get deductions, but those will increase. Talk about that some more. Properties that are subject to the 2% tax cap. This is your residential property that is non-homestead and this is all the ag land and long-term care facilities. Those are all properties that are subject to a 2% circuit breaker cap. Those are starting to get deductions. They didn't used to have any deductions. And then business personal property. As it currently stands, if a, an equipment is over $80,000 of cost, it is assessed and is included in the net assessed value in the tax base. That threshold is moving to $2 million for pay 2027. So essentially any property that has an acquisition cost under $2 million would no longer be included in the tax base. Personal property also has, and I'm probably getting into more detail than I need to on this slide because we get into this more, but, but the, the personal property has a 30% floor as it relates to its assessed value. So if that personal property can get depreciated over time, there is a floor to how much it can be assessed at for tax-based purposes. That floor is going away for new personal property that gets acquired really after January 1 of this year.
Old stuff stays on as?
Yes. Yes. Homestead credits. This is, these homestead properties are getting both deductions, additional deductions, but then also homestead credits. And this is an, an actual credit on their tax bill. Will look kind of like a circuit breaker losses. Essentially these properties are going to get this credit and that's going to be funded by a shortfall of property taxes for Carroll schools and all the overlapping taxing units. That does start in with this next budget year in 2026. Those deductions I mentioned, there's a phase in of those that phases in over time. Property tax levies. So this is the, the revenue amount that you can seek, especially for your operations fund that has the ability to grow at 4% for next year. And then future years will still have some growth, but that, that formula, they could adjust that, but they've capped that 4% property tax levy growth for next year. This next one, additional step in budget development. This is a few years out, but eventually you'll have to do an additional hearing as part of your budget, budget process if you will be raising your property tax levy. And considering that the operations fund from year to year tends to grow at a growth quotient, more than likely that would trigger this and ultimately be this additional step in the budget process moving forward. Local income tax was significantly changed as part of this as well. The local income tax, the way it is written right now would not be shared with schools starting in 2028. There's also some income tax that is utilized for property tax relief that essentially shows up as a credit on someone's tax bill. That in its current form gets eliminated as well. Referendum. They've adjusted that to only occur during general elections. So in even years and just in the fall, general elections. Bond issuances. There are some stipulations here on general obligation bonds. There's some limitations to depending upon the term of repayment of your general obligation bonds and what kind of process it was subject to. It could be create a, a, a moratorium or a cooling off period. Depending upon, again, there's, there's some detail behind that. And then the charter school sharing. If you have at least 100 students that are attending a, a brick and mortar charter, then there's a stipulation to start sharing some operations fund money. And if there was an operating referendum, that would come into play as well. A lot of, a lot of pieces in there. Homestead deductions. This is showing you what those new homestead deductions and those new homestead credits are over this period through 2031. The standard deduction is phasing out and the supplemental deduction is increasing. There's the homestead credit, as I mentioned, which is the lesser of 10% of the tax bill or $300. And then there are, you have to meet certain requirements for some of these other credits as well for the 65 and over disabled. To show you what this looks like for an, a median home in Carroll schools. If the median home value is about $175,000, the value that it gets taxed on here is $79,000 this year. Over time, this gets phased in at these additional deductions and assuming if that home value was not increasing at all, which more than likely we would see some trending of that increasing from year to year. But the value that it gets taxed on out here in 2031 is $58,000. So it gets all the way to a point where you are able to deduct two-thirds of your value for a homestead property by 2031. So that you're only paying taxes on one-third of that value. The property is subject to the 2% cap. So again, these are your other residential that's non-homestead, rental property, long-term care, agricultural. Right now, those properties don't get any kind of deduction. But over time, they will get an increasing level of deduction to the point where in 2031, they'll be able to deduct one-third of their value. So then they'll pay taxes on two-thirds of their property value. Agricultural land. This shows history of where the base assessment rate has been over time for agricultural property. So there was a change in how the assessment was calculated in this timeframe where the base assessment rate was going down and we saw some assessed values decline in '21 and '22. So out here in, for 2026, that base assessment rate is going down and then it's projected to go back up in 2027. This is the business personal property that I mentioned before. The $80,000 right now, that's the, the level that gets assessed. That moves to $2 million for pay 2027. And then again, that 30% floor, that goes away for new equipment that's placed in service. So what does this mean for Carroll schools? The big thing that we're trying to communicate to folks is that there are multiple pieces that are impacting that net assessed value. To the point where it could be that that net assessed value, maybe not for next year, but over this period of time through 2031, as it phases in, phases in, you might see the net assessed value go down. If your property tax levy, the revenue that you're seeking is, even if that was staying totally steady and constant from year to year, if that net assessed value is going down, we would expect to see that the tax rate required to get that same levy would creep up. And so historically, schools, Carroll schools probably, I think across the state, state have been focused on trying to manage their tax rate from year to year and try to keep the tax rate steady. And that's has been okay to do in an environment where that net assessed value is, is growing steadily from year to year. But in this scenario where that net assessed value could start to go down, we would expect the tax rates would go up. And so one of the things that we are suggesting is considering instead of being focused on what the tax rate is from year to year, since you'll have less control on, of that because of that net assessed value. Considering what the left, what you want the property tax levy to do from year to year. Will that grow by a certain growth quotient? For example, that, the operations fund can grow by the 4% growth quotient for next year and that, that amount will be determined every year. So those are just some things to be thinking about as far as your breakdown of what your tax base looks this year. You have about 46% are in that 2% tax cap range, that ag property. About 29% is the homestead property. And 15% is property that's subject to the 3% tax cap, which is going to be your commercial industrial property. But 15% is the real property. And then the 10% there is that personal property. I will say that the net assessed values for pay 2026 are starting to come out. They're starting to trickle in. We're seeing different things. In some cases, we're still seeing that there are, is some good growth in the net assessed value for next year. Continue to monitor, see if Carroll County comes out, but.
Did you get yours yet? Just checked right before I came in.
So again, there might still be some growth for next year. It's more moving forward as these continue to come on down the line, what that could look like. And I apologize, I noticed in, while I was sitting in the parking lot, there's a typo on this slide, but I confirmed that these dollar amounts are for Carroll schools here. There is a report from the Legislative Services Agency that takes into account these changes, estimated changes to the net assessed value as well as those homestead credits, which I did have, I want to point to, I have the homestead credit. So we did try to quantify here what that, that credit could mean for Carroll schools and we're estimating about $270,000. That was, it's intended to be a conservative estimate. Thank you so much. But the DLGF did come out with some estimates there too, which I don't know if you've seen those, Blake? So that's the big one that's coming into play next year is those homestead credits. And so what Legislative Services Agency is estimating is that the property tax levy in total, this is specifically just property taxes here. Net of that additional homestead credit, they're projecting that the property taxes collections will actually be $24,000 less than they are in 2025. Once those, so in 2026, those homestead credits will be in place. So then from there, they're projecting that there is still growth in the levy at that point, but that's the big piece. I think that why we're seeing that negative number there is that homestead credit coming on in 2026. Any questions on that? This goes into a little bit more, as I mentioned before, there's, there's a, going to be likely an additional step in the budget process. A hearing that's letting people know that there's going to be a levy increase. So it's just another step in the process. This does not come into play for a few years. But want to highlight that that is coming. Local income taxes. So right now Carroll schools receives about $162,000 in income tax revenue from the county. So the county collects income taxes and shares with local units and that's the portion that, that Carroll is supposed to get this year. The way that we understand Senate Enroll Act One is that there's, the way that income taxes are done now is completely changing and starting in 2028, schools will no longer have the ability to share in income taxes. So that's a, a line item and a, a revenue line item that, that we are, there's no changes that we would expect to go away in 2028. So that one doesn't happen immediately, but that, that is something happening in the next couple of years. The other piece that's a, a lot more difficult to to see, I guess, is this elimination of property tax relief. So in Carroll County, the income taxes are taxed and 0.2% income tax rate currently is allocated to property tax relief. And so what that looks like is a credit on tax bills and it shows up as property taxes as they come in because it's, those property taxes would come in and a portion of them are coming from this income tax and then a portion are coming from the property tax. So depending upon where a taxpayer is falling in regards to their tax cap. If they are at their tax cap and this income tax credit on their tax bill goes away beginning in 2028, we would expect additional circuit breaker losses because they're already at their cap. If they're not at their cap and this credit goes away, we would expect that their tax bill would go up because this credit is going away. So it's, it just highlights the complexity of all of these changes impact each school district, each taxing unit very differently depending upon the makeup of their tax base, but it also impacts individual taxing districts. And as far as the types of property, it, it just, it looks different from a taxpayer's perspective and it looks different from the taxing unit's perspective and really, really varies. And there's a lot of, just a lot of moving parts and complexities there. Question on the income tax piece? Again, I know this is a lot to digest.
I don't know what it means when you say a circuit breaker loss.
Like after your tax bracket, you don't have to pay that. So if you lose that available money that you could have gotten, that is now, you no longer get that.
Okay.
Like ours last year was, it was like, we had like $9,000 circuit breakers. And I saw this year, like ours is like $127,000.
Okay.
Your projection for next year?
So we're, I mean, it went from, like, we had no, we had no breakers. Now we have.
Okay.
Way bigger.
So depending upon the type of property, if it's a homestead property, you are capped that you cannot pay more than 1% of your gross assessed value of your home on that property. But then there's a 2% tax cap. So that's circuit breakers, basically it's a tax cap. So once somebody is at their cap, they, they will get a credit on their tax bill so that they don't pay any more than their cap. But that credit is actually just a loss in, in property tax revenue from all the taxing units that, that overlap that property. So moving into the changes for debt service, this is, this is the area where I think you all are in a really good spot compared to some other schools, just based off of where your debt service tax rate is. There, like I mentioned before, general obligation bonds, there are some stipulations there for bonds potentially triggering a cooling off period. This, this is something we'd always want to confirm with bond counsel, but at our glance, we don't think that this is an issue for you all with any bonds that you have currently outstanding. This is a graph of all, all of your current bonds, your payments total right around that $2 million level or so for the next couple of years and then drop down substantially in, in 2028 and then again in 2031. So in general, we can expect that your debt service levy would stay pretty constant if you didn't issue anything through 2027, but then would drop off in 2028 unless you had some additional projects that you pursued. Your debt service tax rate is 32 cents. I actually don't think I got into this on the earlier slide, but there are, for any schools that have a debt service tax rate above 40 cents, all of their projects, regardless of size, are subject to an additional process. They're subject to potential for petition remonstrance. And if, for schools that have a debt service tax rate above 70 cents, all of their projects need to be approved through a referendum vote. So you all are, are at 32 cents. You're under that 40 cent threshold. The one thing that we would, if you wanted to stay under that 40 cent threshold, you would want to continue to monitor what that assessed value is doing from year to year. So this is just another example of even if your levy is steady, if that net assessed value declines enough, it could push the debt service tax rate above that 40 cent threshold. It's not the end of the world to be above that 40 cent threshold. There's a lot of schools in that vote, but that is something that, that you'd want to monitor if you wanted to, to stay under the 40 cents. We did do a calculation, just say based off of where your net assessed value is this year and where that debt levy is this year. There'd have to be an 18% decline in the AV to reach that 40 cent level. The other thing that fluctuates with the net assessed value is your general obligation bonding capacity. You do have a few different general obligation bonds outstanding. The amount that can be borrowed as general obligation depends upon your net assessed value. So if that fluctuates, that impacts how much could be borrowed as general obligation. It does not impact how much could be borrowed as a lease or a first mortgage bond. But again, just another thing to be paying attention to. So I know this is again, a lot. We just listed out here some different considerations for next steps and the big thing is trying to quantify what this could look like and we're, we're starting to work on some, how to quantify some of this. As again, there's a lot of moving parts here. But ultimately I think what it really highlights is the need for some more long-term planning, even though we don't know what the future looks like, but just to be able to see trends of here's, here's generally where we think things are going. And so what do we need to adjust knowing that it could be headed there in the future? There could be, we have some different options here for things you would consider to try to replace any revenues or looking at things to identify budget efficiencies, but it's not a silver, silver bullet. I wish it was, but again, just some things to be considering. That was a lot, not the best news in the world, but any, any other initial questions that you can think of? Again, I know there's a lot here. Feel free to kind of take it and digest it. We're always happy to answer more. always happy to answer more questions later on, too.
Blake, what are some of the major points that you're looking at as you're building the budget this year?
Yeah, just the uncertainty, I think, is the big one, you know, like, you guys, this is your profession, and you know, it's still uncertain, so that's why we rely on it a lot, just seeing what we think those best opportunities are, but just learning how it's changing, you know, and just not on the tax side of it, it's changing on the kid's side of it, too, you know, how much more getting worse. So it's the first time, as I've talked to a lot of people, it's the first time ever that schools have been hit both ways, from the student aspect and from the tax aspect. So we've, you know, talked a lot about it, you know, just trying to make sure we're saying financially conservative, and you know, even if we're just not sure what the future holds. That doesn't mean that the walls, you know, we'll talk more about those as we go, but you know, also, they put a wall on, we gotta change it in the next budget season. So it's not like the, there's, there's an opportunity to plan, you know, where, oh, this is, you know, just a couple of, you know, 65% for teachers, and you know, minimum $45,000, they tell you that in July until you need to start that, you know, as soon as possible. So we're just working through some of those things, but it's going to be a group effort from everybody, just to make sure we can, this small school, keep our financial going the correct way. I've gone through a lot of it, so everything we look at is really under microscope, and what we can do matters, just in case. I always gotta look at the worst-case scenario, so that's kind of what we're doing.
Lindsay, how do you summarize a whole lot of things? One, two, or three things that you'd really focus on for Carroll schools?
I do think, again, you're, I'll say the good news is the referendum, or the sharing of operations or referendum is not an issue for you all, I didn't explicitly say that, but right now, we're in a good spot there, that you don't have to share money to charters. Where your debt service tax rate is at is in a good spot as well, and you aren't heavily hit by circuit breaker, that those tax caps right now, all of those are pieces of good news for you all. But at the end of the day, it is likely working on less revenue into the future, and that's the big challenge is, how will you fill that gap? Will there be trying to look at ways to raise more revenue, or will there be expenditure cuts, is it a combination of the two? And that's going to be the big thing, I think. I also wonder, it might be obvious, but every school is dealing with this, again, differently, but not just every school, but all your counties, cities, and towns, and libraries, all the taxing units, again, they might be impacted differently, but we're all trying to wrap their arms around it, so I think any opportunities you have to kind of put heads together with colleagues, both other school colleagues, but also just other taxing units in the county and surrounding as well, I think is good. I think having, having that sense of community, getting different ideas and all of that, I think can be helpful.
And I understand that cutting expenditures, trying to brainstorm a couple of ways, even doing that right now, or even prior to today, when you say raising revenue, first thing comes to mind, we gotta have more kids to raise revenue.
Yeah.
Are there other things you, you think you might want to say that?
There's operating referendum, not saying that that's imminent, anyone would want to go for or not, but I think we will see more schools doing that, if not next year, soon. The other thing, too, is if if there's some expenditures in your operations fund that are capital in nature, that you shift to being paid for with a bond issue, something like that, to free up cash flow, that's another, those are the ones that come to mind.
And I think, you know, one, I got to top off before, is the change, the mindset between tax rate and levy, you know, like, there's not much money we need to stay, you know, with AV changing, we don't really know, so if we say we're going to stay at this levy, this is where we need to run the, run the school, that tax rate might change just because of that, before we can do some things to manipulate that a little bit with how things are going, you know, we're, you know, changing for the mindset of tax rate more to pay this more levy.
Yeah, I think.
Explain that then.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
I know. Yeah, I mean, I wonder, from a taxpayer's perspective, I mean, there could just be multiple changes going on their tax bill that there is this additional credit that will show up, but also, like I said, that, that local income tax going away could result in some increases to their tax bill that have really nothing to do with anything that's done. But it's going to just depend so much on the individual taxpayer, and where they sit, and where they are at with their tax cap, too.
Thank you, Lindsay, appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
Anybody else, have you got any questions?
Thank you for having me.
Thanks so much. Always a wealth of information, Lindsay, appreciate all your help. Already more members, Baker, Kelly, and Lindsay have helped us with a lot of the other bonds and other funding that we've gotten here in the past, so always good to go to people. Appreciate them very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're still going with the video right now, work session, anything else, budget, finance, that we need to touch upon here for the work session? Blake, anything else you want to add to that?
No, I think yours is, you know, there's a lot.
There's a lot.
It is a lot.
There's a lot of moving parts here, it'd take years.
And I think that's.
We're going to lower, you know, the state's going to do all this, and then, okay, let's make the school the bad guy, because they gotta raise the rate, so, to get the same money, so, I mean, you're going to be back at square one, right?
Feels like it. All right, well, if there's any other questions or statements along finances, Jamie, I'll let you go ahead, well, we'll go ahead and end this meeting, and Jamie can go ahead and take care of the video for us.